Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
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 Thank you for bearing with us. We had a couple of technical difficulties and also it's Friday, so hopefully you were able to grab another cup of coffee. I know I did. We are recording the session. I think the new Zoom feature is that it tells you that we're doing that as soon as you enter in the room. So I just want to remind everyone of that. But we're going to go ahead and get started. Hi, welcome. My name is Gracie Semeninger and I am the President of the Downtown Council of the Jax Chamber. The recording, as I mentioned, will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. And if you haven't already searched the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so and hit subscribe. I'm going to give a brief overview of Downtown Council and then we'll introduce our speaker for today. So we are one of eight Chamber councils. And simply put Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses, and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that Greater Jacksonville and downtown will thrive and prosper. In a city with seven bridges, we are the eighth bridge. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to hearing different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves in keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top tier speakers to our meetings. And this morning is certainly no different. Today's speaker is the electric Diana Donovan, the Executive Director of the Cultural Council for Greater Jacksonville. She will be discussing more art culture, igniting the creative economy. Welcome Diana. At this time, I'm going to recognize all Downtown Council Board members. Will you please wave to our attendees this morning? I also want to give a huge shout out to our Downtown Council Board Member Bonnie Arnold, who just celebrated her 80th birthday. So happy birthday Bonnie. And I believe Amanda Crawford also celebrated a birthday this week. So happy birthday Amanda. I don't think you're quite 80 yet, but we're excited to have you both a part of the team. At this time, I'm going to recognize all of our new Downtown Council members, and we have a lot, so bear with me. First and foremost, Ms. Betsy Fallen, Tanya Adams with Ability Housing, Daniel Lockey with Compassionate Alternative Care, Alan Devault with Downtown Investment Authority, Nicole Hamm with Eastern Quality Foods, Joe Hensley with Hyatt Regency Jacksonville Riverfront, Sarah Mills Gordon with Jewish Family and Community Services, Tamara Colcord with Re-threaded, and Dr. Edith Abdullah with the University of North Florida. Welcome to DTC. At this time, I'm now going to turn it over to our Programs Director Laura Phillips-Echcombe to share more about today's speaker. Laura, take it away.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. As you can see, I am here with our speaker this morning. So it's kind of exciting. One of the things that we're going to talk about when we when we shift to Diana's presentation is actually some of the changes that we've had to make to this year's events due to COVID and those sorts of things. So while we're sitting here next to each other, I want everyone to know, we're both fully vaccinated and we spend a lot of time together. So that is why we feel comfortable and safe in this space. And you know, as Gracie had mentioned, we're really excited to have Diana here today to speak about the Cultural Council and where it's, I mean, she literally, she joined the Cultural Council a year ago. So September 11th, a year, it's not even a full year ago. And a lot is, a lot of great and wonderful, amazing things have happened. And I'm excited to let her share with you guys kind of where it's been, where it's going. And it holds a place in my heart because I have volunteered, shockingly, my time to help with the Cultural Council Art Awards this year. So I've kind of been able to see on the little back, you know, back look at everything and kind of on the insiders, which is really exciting and nice. And one of the reasons why ultimately, I really think that it would be beneficial for Diana to speak to everyone this morning. So I'm going to give you a little bit of info on her, for those of you that don't know her. She is serving as the newly appointed Executive Director of the Cultural Council of Greater Jacksonville. Like I said, that has not even been a full year. And for those of you that don't know a whole lot about the Cultural Council, don't worry, you're about to find out. She is a proven change agent with multiple years of executive level leadership and board experience. She is shaping, she's very successful in shaping effective fundraising and has a track record for being results driven. She, her accolades include the 2020 Jacksonville Business Journal 40 under 40, and she was classed at 21 for Leadership Jax. She's a Jax MVP with the Jacksonville Jaguars Foundation, served on the Florida Times &amp; Union Citizen Editorial Board, and a High Tower Fellow Board Member, which it makes you very happy. For those who don't know, I made High Tower Fellowship. Lots going on this morning. And she also is the Board Nominated Representative for the City of Jacksonville's Cultural Service Grant Committee, which is a big deal when we talk about arts and culture here in Jacksonville. She's a champion for arts and women's leadership, believes in the power of empowerment, and as well as an active advocate for diversity and inclusion. She served as a Longtime Board Member for the Women's Center of Jacksonville, was a Dolores Bar Weaver Fellow and Class Chair within the Women's Giving Alliance, and served on the Girl Scouts of America Women of Distinction Committee. With all that, there is so many other things that she's done. I'm like reading through her bio this morning. I was just overwhelmed. I mean, I know you personally, and I think you're a dear and you're a light in this community. But seeing it all on paper, it's a bit intimidating and overwhelming, but that's all good and gravy. With that, I'm going to let Diana go and speak this morning. She's got a very dynamic presentation, you guys. So if you aren't awake, I promise you, you will be by the time she's done. Going to remind you, this is being recorded. Once, if you have any questions, throw them in the chat box on the right hand side. I, we have a whole lot of information to go through this morning, but I promise we'll have a lot of time for questions as well. And with that, Diana, there you go.
Thank you. That was a wonderful introduction. And I just want to just pay some honor to our hosts for today. Gracie, I've had the honor of knowing for over a decade now, and I got to see her when she came to Jacksonville. We became fast friends. And Laura has been a dynamic force on our Arts Awards Committee. So to see these two female professionals just do what they have done for Jacksonville and be among them today and among the Board. We got to see some of the Board members earlier. I know my CFO is on here, Nan Kramer, as well as a couple of Executive Directors, Darren and Kathleen, and a couple others that I saw RSVP today, and some very good friends. So it's wonderful to be with you all today. So without further ado, we will share our screen and we'll get into a wonderful presentation about what we've been doing to help activate our Jacksonville and ignite the creative economy. So I will go here to share screen and real quick. Share. And then we'll go up. Slideshow. Around the beginning. There we go. All right. So the Cultural Council is near and dear to my heart. I've been in Jacksonville since 2007. And so while I am not from Jacksonville, I often say that I am of Jacksonville now because this is absolutely my home. I live in San Marco. I've lived in multiple parts of the city. And so I really do have a heart for our city, our vision, our focus, our mission to just bring our citizens together for the quality of life. And so you'll see here that we'll be talking about the igniting the creative economy together. There's a lot of business partnerships here. Downtown Jacksonville is, you know, often said on the verge. You know, we have all these great things coming. There's been a lot of real tangible efforts recently done by a lot of really incredible community investors and leaders. And we want arts and culture to be on the forefront of that. So as we walk through, you'll learn about how many cultural service grantees we have in District Seven and downtown. We'll talk about some of the public art and where it lays out. We'll share with you what we do as a trusted granted steward of the City of Jacksonville, some other areas of igniting that we've done with pop-up galleries. And then we'll close on our Arts Awards, which is Laura touched on earlier, but exciting because it's our 45th Annual Virtual Arts Awards. So we will be doing it virtually to keep everyone celebrating safe, but it will be produced by PRI. And our title sponsor is ViStar. So we're very grateful to have such great partners, particularly downtown, as we walk through. Before we start to the next slide, I just want to share with you, if you can see the background behind me, you may recognize this building. We are also downtown residents from a company perspective. So we are graciously located in the Jesse, within the actual Jesse staff area. So we're on the third floor. And Mari and her team, Mark, have been particularly helpful in helping to move us for the first move in over 20 years. So we were formerly downtown, and our partners were next to the symphony. And that space had been long, well-loved. And so during my internship, we were able to dust off our boots and move into this new, wonderful and innovative space with a lot of like-minded individuals. It helps us to be community accessible. So we are in the middle of a hub where we can get to our partners at the City of Jacksonville. We can, you know, be able to have, have and host other nonprofits here for partnerships, opportunities, activations, and events, and be in a building where really the thought is about pushing Jacksonville forward together. So we have a lot of really great neighbors in here. Like you may have heard of like United Way and Catholic Charities, and J-Paff, and a lot of other dynamic partners. So that's where we're located currently. And that's our investment in downtown is where we are actually living and breathing here. And I hope to see you out at lunch as we're walking around together in the safest of cities. All right. So we are a Northeast Regional Arts and Cultural Organization, and we are a 501(c)(3). Oftentimes, when people talk about the Cultural Council, we share what do we do? What were we created for? As you can imagine, arts and culture can be a lot of things. And it can mean a lot of things to different people. And so our mission expresses enrich life in Northeast Florida by investing in arts and culture. And there's that word investing. Our vision, arts and culture are recognized as essential for quality of life. And so when we say investing, and we say essential, and we say quality of life, quality of life is the term of how are we getting people who come to Jacksonville to stay in Jacksonville? How are we retaining talent? How are we activating cultural tourism? How are we helping to support and activate our arts and cultural organizations and our artists and our small businesses and our galleries to help make sure that when you come to downtown, you have a top-tier, high-class experience or anywhere in Jacksonville as we do serve the Greater Jacksonville area? All right, our values. We are collaborative and imaginative, engaging, inclusive, and placemaking. We are very fortunate that our Board Chair Janet Walker Ford, and incoming Board Chair Ari Jolly, who is currently the Board Chair for JTA. We have two dynamic female representative leaders, and they have been a force of nature in the past year and helping us to recalibrate, re-center, and refocus. And as we've had leadership changes, we've been able to really think thoughtfully about how we engage in the community. How do we highlight cultural deserts? How do we go into places and take our CSGs, which are, which is short for cultural service grantees, that we're able to engage with them and be able to, you know, people like Mocha, you know, Downtown Mosh, you know, these names that you've often seen and heard, they are what help add to the culture and quality of life downtown. How do we help support and advocate for additional funding for these programs to help make sure that they're successful? And then again, the rising tide lifts all boats to elevate all of our CSGs throughout Jacksonville to make sure that everywhere is reaching a placemaking, inclusive, engaging, imaginative, and collaborative environment? All right. Supporting three pillars of communities' quality of life. As you think about the Cultural Council, think about us in three pillars. One is that we manage the City of Jacksonville's Cultural Service Grant Program, which you heard me mention earlier. Second is that we manage and facilitate Duval County's Art in Public Places Program. And third is that we enhance economic and development opportunities for individual artists and small organizations, nonprofit organizations, as they fall under the umbrella of the arts and culture sector. So this is exciting for us because in the 1970s, we were established as the Arts Assembly. And then it was just sort of a collaborative effort among arts institutions to come together and help celebrate Jacksonville in a meaningful, strategic, and collaborative way. In the 1990s, we shifted. And that's when we became the Cultural Service Grant Program. And that's when the City of Jacksonville decided it is imperative to our survival as a city and to our thriving as a city to invest in our cultural arts and arts and culture organizations. So that's when this grant program was set up to where the city utilized the Cultural Council for over more than 20 years as a trusted steward of approximately $3 million worth of funding. And so that is something that we do annually, where it's recurring operating grant funds. And those of you who are very familiar with grants know that it's very important to have operating grants available. Oftentimes, you'll see a lot of grant programming for, for programs or for, you know, high level or high-quality festivals or events. And those are important and wonderful, but not often do you see people who want to help you keep the lights on, keep your salaries paid, you know, support the families and the talent at our Amies Arts and Culture staffs to help make sure that they can maintain that high-quality environment, that you can attract and maintain and retain good talent. So an operating grant is essential to the functionality, and you'll hear more about that later as well. Our Art in Public Places Program is very exciting in the sense that we help support art in public places in the sense of when you see sculptures or murals, when you see sidewalk activations, you see crosswalks in Springfield recently. When you walk around downtown Jacksonville, there's so much public art. Art Public, you know, is a huge partner in that as well. Black Mural Map is doing a tremendous job helping to highlight all the BIPOC artists throughout the community. So, you know, it is a collaborative effort. It's never just the Cultural Council. And our mission is to give away our platform to help elevate all the good work already being done by our CSGs and our Art in Public Places collaborators, and then enhancing our economic opportunities like the Art C and Shop. So this is exciting, and especially to my business owners out there. We were able to partner with Heinz, the markets at Town Center, where they covered our overhead costs and provided us a space for free to partner with UNF's LGBTQ Center to highlight a place for diversity and inclusion, local art and business shine. And what we were able to do in this space, which was a really wonderful, dynamic, and honestly, very moving opportunity, we were extended three times. It started as a holiday pop-up. We were there to help sell, sell art and provide a platform for entrepreneurs and artists. And then we shifted. We shifted into this really wonderful cultural engagement space where we were able to highlight from January to June, all of the important historic heritage months, as well as activating multiple communities. And so we were able to do about $70,000 in gross, not including prior taxes and fees, with 65% of that going back to our local artists, also referred to as Northeast Regional Artists. And it was a wonderful and tremendous opportunity. And as we walk through, I'll give you some numbers on that. You'll see 40% of our artists were BIPOC, 50%. It was their first professional gallery opportunity. This is huge. The ability to be able to show and have and be able to build that professional portfolio, to be able to sell an art piece and empower someone as a creator and as a business person. It's really a wonderful opportunity. And to see a lot of these people be females, BIPOC artists, people from the immigrant community who had shared with me that they had never sold a piece before, and that this was their first time really stepping into this new sector of their lives and their careers, was a really moving and exciting time for us to be able to highlight them and the dynamic force that they bring to our community. 101 participating artists. We mentioned before, 65% sales revenue back to the artists. 60% were women, and extended three times and exceeded our June sales goal by over 30%. So we closed strong. We had incredible partnership with marketing, and we actually did some live outdoor performances. So if you're wondering, where was this exciting gallery? It was right across from Cooper's Hock. So strategically located that they had an open space there where you could grab wine and then have a good time with us, come in for activated space and events. We hosted chamber events there. We hosted Re-threaded. We hosted Women's Network. We did a lot of really great things in that space. Sisters Incorporated. We had, you know, a start with the Arts for Black History Month. We brought a black artist to talk about the experience of what it is to be an artist in the community and how to activate and overcome, and how to really be thoughtful about your partners within the First Coast Hispanic Chamber. They came in for Women's History Month, Jewish American Heritage Month. We did, we highlighted artists. We did a Coming Out of the Closet exhibit where we actually used the closets in the retail space to where every closet you walked into helped change your mind frame of if you were someone from that community, what would it be like to come out in their way? And it was a very thoughtful experience. And then we partnered that also with, you know, Rodney Hurst coming in from the activist experience. And we had a lot of book sales and authors there, photography, wine glasses, furniture. We had one artist, I think, net over 75K outside of our shop where they sold a few pieces through us, and then we recommended them to a buyer, and then they were able to, you know, have a very successful outcome. So really wonderful stories and anecdotes from our Art C and Shop, 10 educational workspaces, 20 arts and culture demonstrations, live stream panels, over 1,000-plus art items. So there's, there was art you wear. We had scarves. It was really exciting to see textual art there. You could see a little bit of everything, and it was reflective of the community. So the goal was not only to have a place for them to be able to sell art and culturally activate in a meaningful way, meeting the mission of diversity and inclusion with Heinz, but also to have a gallery experience and to have people walk in and see themselves on the walls, which is a huge deal to make sure that we're representative. And so we didn't put any one artist together. As you walked through the gallery, you saw how the pieces, pieces spoke to each other. You got to see the different flavors and styles all mixed into one wonderful pot. And so we're really proud of being, of all the artists who showed up and showed out because their talent spoke for themselves. So it made it easy for us to do our jobs in selling their work. All right. So that being said, moving on to Art in Public Places. This is what we were talking about earlier. We're, we're currently managing the largest quantity in the City of Jacksonville history of our public places projects. When we came in and I took the helm in September, in about January, we had about seven Art in Public Places projects. We had a leadership transition, Ronan Jen Jones Murray. And we've been able to more than double that. We have almost 34 across the table in ongoing pending or completed projects. So it's been really exciting to see that grow, for us to be really intentional about creating an Art in Public Places Committee that's inclusive and like-minded and matches our values. And so that has been exciting because they challenge us to work with each different city council district to make sure that we're highlighting different areas, that we're increasing funding support as much as we can for CRAs as they're thinking about how they want to bring art to their community. It reduces blight and increases safety and community pride. It connects people. It's representative. There's so many good things to public art. And it's been wonderful to really kind of watch that take off. And so currently managing 2.1 million in public art. You can see here some of the numbers as we're walking through. And then most exciting and also located downtown is one of our largest projects, if not the, is right here, the Courthouse Plaza Project. And one of the beautiful things about this piece is that it marries national and local talent. And we have five local artist storytellers who are representative of the community and have been working and partnering with the artists to help make sure that we're telling a meaningful and thoughtful story of Jacksonville. And that who, everyone who enters and comes out of the courthouse is reminded of these important pillars in the community of equality and justice and equity. And, you know, it's really been an exciting project to see transform. And you'll see our, we're here to the left of the screen, project management, art consulting, civic art planning, long-term maintenance, marketing online for home and beyond. So we do a lot of different things for our five pillars of public art success. And we're, we're walking into a new endeavor of really being a dynamic force in the community to help highlight what is already being done and then help fill the holes and needs as we see them in the community. All right. So over here, we have 268 pieces in the current collection, 66 of public art was developed by local artists, 977,000 plus Duval County residents impacted by Art in Public Places, .19 cost per capita for public art, value of the city's installed collection is about $9 million and $3.6 million total public art projects development. All right. And this is, I love a good graphic design because it helps you see where it's at, what we're looking at, what are the numbers. One of the things that I love about the Cultural Council is that we have the arts and culture community, and then the government and business community, and we work to serve as that bridge. So you'll see here, it's public art and city council districts. Your district downtown has the largest amount of public art currently provided by Art in Public Places. This is not including Art Republic and other dynamic art forces. This is just including the collection that we serve and that we maintain. And then you can see here that the other districts, it's represented around this area that we're working to enhance and grow there and help city council feel well-supported as we can start being more of a dynamic force with them. And here, the piece on the side is down to the lower right is right across from the Florida Theater. You can see the Florida Theater in the background. And so you've seen, maybe seen some of these pillars as you were walking around downtown, all great and wonderful things. All right. A wide array of project examples include, sometimes people will ask me, how much does public art cost? It can cost as little as much as the project needs or requires. So here's some prices for some of the investments that the city has made and helping to bring some of these public art pieces to life. And then diversity. So this is two exciting things that we have happening right now that I want to be able to highlight. First is the Filipino-American History mural in partnership with Dr. and Mrs. Aldana. This came from a Leadership Jacksonville partnership in real time. The joke, and if you know Leadership Jacksonville, we're the best class. Well, we said in 2020 that we were virtually the best class, because we were virtual for the predominant amount of time. But the one day that we got to do in person was arts and culture. And so Karen Fagans, who's our Arts Awards Chair, actually chaired that for Leadership Jacksonville. We had a lot of dynamic artists and cultural art institutions come in and speak. And during that time period, you'll be able to see that I got to meet Mr. and Mrs. Aldana. And Carmena was actually in my class, and we started talking about impactful partnership opportunities. And they wanted to bring a mural to the Filipino community, representing, you know, a piece of their heritage and heart. And they're funding it personally. We're working in the community to figure out a meaningful place for it to be. And we actually right now have a call to artists for it, for Filipino artists. So that's really exciting as well. And it actually went national. So you can see it's our best performing host in history, and it was shared out, and we had a lot of really great partners, and they were ready for it. And, and that population is so large in Jacksonville and has such an unsung story that we're excited about the opportunity to provide a platform for them to be able to tell their story, to celebrate their heritage, and to bring other people into that process and that storytelling to celebrate them as one whole larger Jacksonville community. Next is Hispanic Heritage mural partnership. So this is a partnership with the Jacksonville Jaguars. They'll be sponsoring it. And then we will also be partnering with DuPont Middle School with their ESOL program. And they have a large majority of students that speak multiple languages within that community. And the First Coast Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Monica Hernandez, the president and I have been working with the Jaguars to bring a mural there that's representative. So here's a teaser of what the art potentially will look like, but they're still in the process of working through it. So we're excited about what that will be. It'll be a September install, and that's how we'll be helping to support and take off Hispanic Heritage Month. Next, Public Art Project Dashboard. Here's some, a list of some of the public art that's being distributed now. You'll see some names that you may recognize on here. Jack Mars mural, JTA. JTA has been a tremendous and transformative partner. If you have not been in their new facility and seen the artwork that we've been able to provide for them, it has been huge. So we're really excited about what that looks like, how we can help support. You know, Nat Ford has really stepped up in a place where placemaking, maximizing impact, you know, delivering, providing an opportunity to take a business where you think of transportation, right? Very corporate, very business-minded, and marry it into something like placemaking, marry it into a neighborhood, a cultural investment opportunity. You know, he is really on the forefront of that. And because of him, we're having conversations with other big dogs and the community. And, you know, it's really exciting to see people understanding how we can help maximize the opportunity with them, connect them with artists, connect them with cultural service grants, grant programs, and partners and organizations that can help fulfill these needs for them, working as a conduit and a collaborator for good talent. And here you'll see some of our goals, public art, and very excited about, one of the ideas here is a comprehensive city artwork collection website. We're really wanting to work on getting a collaborative website that doesn't just highlight our art, but all of the City of Jacksonville's public art, and to be able to put it on a national platform and work with institutions throughout Jacksonville, college institutions, which they have their own databases to help perpetuate that out. We're looking, we're working with DVI right now and a couple other large organizations visit Jacksonville to help really make sure that we're creating a website that's thoughtful, that everything on the backend speaks to each other, and that we can all share information in real time, and that we're highlighting all the good things that we have in Jacksonville, so that people come here and stay. We, you know, we don't want people, as much, as wonderful as St. Augustine is, we have a lot of cultural activation here and telling that story intentionally and marrying it to an ROI for the city, helping business and community leaders know what comes back to them. UNF, as Community Initiative Program, did a study that every dollar you invest in the arts and culture community comes back to you in double. And that is huge because that means for every dollar that the city has put in, and we'll get to this in a moment, that that comes back double. And for what we have seen and what our CSGs have done, particularly during a time of resiliency and innovation during the year of COVID, there's a lot of really great opportunity there. So you'll see here, this is our Cultural Service Grant Program. Here is highlighted some of our Cultural Service Grant Partners. You may recognize some of these scenes from the downtown areas. It's been exciting to just really watch and learn. I was on this, formally on the CSG Committee. So I was a part of the process of how we do the grant making and the grant evaluating. And when you read these applications, I mean, there are pages and pages long of how they're changing lives. And it's a wonderful documentation of the work that they do, very comprehensive. But, you know, I will give an example. In July, I was able to sit in the Florida Theater, a CSG providing space for another CSG, the Performers Academy, where they were able to take foster children performing arts and do a performance for them in their summer presentation. And this summer presentation had two girls, twins, taken from a foster home with a history of abuse that were, had selective mutism. So they were choosing not to speak because of the trauma that they had endured. For the first time ever, one of them spoke on stage to talk about her artwork. And then the other one worked up the courage to actually perform live and sing a song dedicated to her father onstage in And then the other one worked up the courage to actually perform live and sing a song dedicated to her father on stage in real time. And it's moments like that where it hits the heart and you're like, this is why we do what we do. And it's moments like that that also help show, you know, the tremendous impact that these organizations have. And who will we be as a city if we didn't have them? So you'll see here, this is how we're governed by the ordinance. Our goal is to help advance opportunities and appreciation of expression for the arts for our CSGs as well as other programs throughout the city of Jacksonville. Bram, we've helped sponsor murals there and projects and programs at Riverside Arts Market. There's a lot of different fan favorites. We've helped support it in different capacities for Art Walk throughout the years. You know, as we're moving forward, we want to become more and more intentional about how we partner and leverage with the arts community. And make sure that we're not creating programs that we're leveraging already good programs that are there. And if we do have a program, it's there to supplement, complement, enhance and innovate. And then here is a very powerful graphic. From the story we just shared. If we did not find have funding and we don't have operating grant funding, this is a sort of a percentage of what would be impacted based off of the stats that are submitted to Amy Grant. Or Amy Palmer, who's our grant operator and director and coordinator and facilitator and manager. She she has held so many roles over the past twenty years that she really is our historical heartbeat of the organization and has kept a very steady helm. It missed a lot of different transitions. It's been wonderful to be able to see that. And then you can see here, these are our CSGs by the district. So we showed you earlier art and public places by the district. Here are CSGs. And so right now, the funding, you'll see thirty five organizations apply this year. So it's a ten plus percent increase. We're working to create more people in the funnel. We want to make sure that, you know, we're we're helping to create an experience and environment that's fair and equitable. Compliant with the Office of General Counsel, that we're trusted stewards, but that we also use our CSG hearings as a time to highlight all the good work being done. This has been a tremendously hard and impactful year. And you'll see the fifty five percent there. That number talks about out of the available amount of funding that they could have, fifty five percent is what we have from budget that we're able to give them. And so we're enhancing that because you'll see here, this is some ROI numbers for those of you who are more number minded. Wanted to give you some visuals here as you can walk through and see through there, sort of by the numbers, economic impact of eighty five million. And that is huge, absolutely huge. And then when we go to the next page, you'll see how we compare, right? When we look at, it's hard because Jacksonville is a consolidated government, has an interesting city format. So it's not a copy and paste from other cities. So what we utilized here was by population, right? We're serving the greater population. Here are the numbers and the people we're serving and the amount of city investment and funding that we've seen for other cities. And so as we're working to move forward, you can see some of like Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Orlando, these bigger cities that have similar sized populations that we're aspiring and growing into and the investment they've made and how transformative their communities have been. I think Sarasota and St. Petersburg are wonderful examples of people who really seize the moment. I mean, it was Carpe Diem with them. They got the Dolly Museum and now look at St. Petersburg. You know, it's amazing. Sarasota's public art is transformational. Because they were intentional, strategic, and they had all of the collaborators and and partners by their side. So that's been a really exciting thing and we want to be able to help harness that and utilize brain power from, you know, partners at Mocha and and partners, you know, at, you know, the comer, you know, as comer's been such a staple in the community. I'm using names that you may have heard of, but like, don't miss a beat, hope at hand. You know, all of these organizations, there's so much tremendous players by the sea. You know, I could go on and on about the amount of impact that these organizations have had. And so it's been really exciting to provide an opportunity to number base for that. And you can see primary funding sources, the majority of money that we get, we actually give out. So we have to fundraise to keep our operations going at the moment for our model. But we're working to be able to transition out so that we can become a full grant making agency. Our goal is to really lean into our role as a trusted grant making steward. So we'd like to be able to be able to really take like almost a United Way approach, not in how they appropriate funding, but from a conceptual standpoint to share with you all. You go to United Way and they give the funding to give out to other organizations. We want to do that for arts and culture. We want partners and businesses to say, we want to give to the arts and culture community. We want to give to XYZ. What are their current needs? What are they looking for to need? And then us to be able to give that funding away for innovative programs and also contingency funding, which we found out this year was more imperative than any other time that we have seen, because it has really truly been a year of resiliency. Miracle making has been a word that's been often water to wine. You have all these organizations where their primary source of revenue are literally like people in seats. And when everyone goes virtual, that changes everything. It changes your business model. It changes your staff. It changes how many people you can source. You know, it's it's been an incredible year. I think it's almost two hundred and forty million dollars documented in twenty twenty of economic losses across the nation from the arts and culture community. We were the number three hardest hit sector in the nation, according to the New York Times. And you know, it's been almost, I think it was almost something close to eighty five K jobs that were impacted as of the twenty twenty numbers. So it has been a really hard year for this community and yet they've still stepped up, served and provided in new dynamic ways. And as we watch them step into this new normals, particularly with the Delta variant coming back. You've never seen an industry have to be more nimble and more adaptive. And if you know a lot about the arts, you know, performance art changes when you change how you're viewing it. So if you're not in a theater and you're watching it virtually, that directly impacts the experience. So it's it's different. It's a different medium. So if there's a lot of changes that are happening where I cannot commend our city of Jacksonville community enough because a lot of them could have had their door shut. With the city of Jacksonville stepped up the COJ CARES Act, which was tremendous. And they were, they set in a lot of stepped up in a lot of different funding opportunities. And so it was really wonderful to see that and it was really wonderful to just kind of celebrate that resiliency. It really is the term. Here to see capital needs. This is exciting because we did a survey where they were a hundred percent feedback. You can see that there's infrastructure needs, right? Outside of operating, outside of programming, there's infrastructure needs. We are, we are working with the city of Jacksonville right now, the mayor's office and city council to approve an increase for our CSG program, which includes capital grant funding. So fingers crossed on that, that we are working through to get some wonderful elevation there. Arts and advocacy in action. You'll see, we were able to get a twenty thousand dollar NEA sub grant award this year. We were able to increase our state funding. And we were able to secure eight hundred thousand in emergency federal funding facilitated through the city of Jacksonville in partnership with the city council. A huge shout out to city councilman Michael Boylan, who was a former CSG executive director and now city council member. Formerly our liaison and helped us secure this funding to be able to reimburse it for COVID impacted its cultural service grant organizations. So this is huge for us and you can see, you know, the total advocacy there. If we're able to secure the city of Jacksonville funding, we'll have one point five million advocacy this year. And we're working hard. I mean, it is boots on the ground. This is, this is a cultural council two point O where we're meaning to be strategic, collaborative, thoughtful. And a numbers driven. All right. This is the exciting part of how we can engage with you. So we have the virtual forty fifth annual arts awards. And as you can see, this whole theme is igniting the creative economy. So we have flames and neon and, you know, flash bang. It's it's really for for us, it feels like sort of the phoenix that has been having to rise for these organizations. Where they've been taking nothing and making it not only into something, but into tremendous impact for the community. So you'll see that we have our arts awards chair this year is the one and only Karen Fagins. A lot of you know her because of her work and involvement in the community. She's a dear friend and a board member. I was a former board member and got to serve alongside her. And she is a roll up your sleeves kind of leader and as our our entire volunteer committee here. So you'll see our committee here, they have stepped up every Friday. We've been meeting, we planned a wonderful in person arts awards for you all. And then decided that we would like to keep you all safe and healthy and switch to virtual. So we have pivoted as the as the term pivot is often uses. And now we are on the virtual arts awards. And so you'll see that we're we're working hard to help make sure that we're leveraging that and honoring. You can see here is our timeline of the arts awards. And so just making sure you can all see that this is six to six thirty, we're going to have a cocktail crafting hour. Dublasse and Manifest will be highlighted. DJ Nick Fresh will be playing. I just want to take a moment. I know that you were all able to hear from Manifest and I was fortunate enough to hear their presentation in person. They have been dynamic leaders in the arts and culture industry long before I have taken the helm. And I have gotten time to spend time with Jim and a lot of the other leadership there. And they have gone above and beyond in times where you know, it was deeply needed, deeply appreciated, deeply impactful. So I'm so appreciative. And I do want to take a thoughtful thank you because Dublasse is a new partner. So they're dynamic and they're coming into it. They have a vanilla whiskey that's exciting for you to try. And if you buy our VIP celebration box, you'll be able to try it in real time as a sample. But I do want to make sure that I take a moment just to celebrate and honor Manifest because you'll see them as a partner as we move forward. Presenting sponsor, twenty event tickets. So we have a presenting sponsor opportunity for ten thousand. You'll see here some of the perks here. Available on our website as well. Award sponsor, this is our most coveted sponsorship. And we literally every year see businesses compete over trying to sponsor which award. We have so many dynamic people. You can see from here the names, huge winners in the community who have won these awards. You know, it it covers every age, demographic, business, private, public. I mean, it's a really wonderful opportunity to step up and highlight people in the community who have been going above and beyond. And recognize them in front of their peers, educate the community on what they're doing and then help with that advocacy. Advocate sponsor and play sponsor. There's a role and and support for every partner here. And then tickets. So these are our two ticket opportunities. You'll see we have with two, two distillers here. That's the celebration box. If you buy the VIP ticket, you'll get charcuterie and delicious snacks from the bread and board. Brought to you by the Laura Nurse Truly, switching into her screen. And so it has been really exciting to partner with such dynamic partners and be able to help celebrate that. So if you'd like to purchase a ticket. Our sales are live. You can go onto our website and do that. Reach out to us. We'll be happily send you a link. I can send it out to Laura to see if there's ways that you'd like to partner with us from a corporate standpoint or from an individual standpoint. I think if nothing else, it's worth coming together just to understand and know the brilliance within your community and these people who are truly the unsung heroes, who are boots on the ground every day, making it happen. And it's not often the numbers and the names that you see here. It's often people who have really done transformative work. And this is their moment to be highlighted among their peers, to be recognized and also bring advocacy and education to the areas and the goals and missions that they serve. And this is our arts plus campaign. So this is how we're reshifting into rethinking into going to that grant making, grant writing area is that we would like to launch with our arts plus campaigns. So the Jacksonville Jaguars partnered with us on the NFL draft. Where we had actual artists come in and create these footballs that were signed by players. We auctioned them off. We had a tent at the actual draft with the artists there in real time. And we were able to do a really meaningful partnership there. So being able to help activate cultural deserts. Being able to help support CSGs and some of their programming on a more dynamic way, bringing public art to different places. Us to be able to have this large fund for innovation and contingency funding. So a lot of grant opportunities. I will do another shout out to Karen Fagins because PNC gave us twenty five thousand dollars last year in grants. And we worked with all their stakeholders from their company to be able to decide where do they want to serve? What were the needs in the community they were working to serve? How did that marry with their mission and vision? And we were able to appropriate out those funds. So a lot of the funds and the thing that comes into the cultural council comes right back out of us. And we like it that way because we want to make sure that we're helping to provide and support as much as we are able. All right. Here are some of our partners. The list is very long, but we wanted to put some of the highlights on here that you may recognize. We're so appreciative of our public private partnerships and advancing Jacksonville's mission, arts and culture potential together. And as we move forward, we hope that we will add your logo to these. So let us know how we can support your organization if you're interested in partnering. If you just want to learn more, you know, I was able to walk into the vault at San Marco in real time yesterday. And we were able to share some pictures out from them. We were able to meet with the the own business owner and make these positive relationships. I could hear what some of their needs were as a functioning small business. You know, there's so much good work happening and we just want to make sure that we're able to elevate it on a large sector. All right. So that being said, thank you for your time. Thank you for your investment. Thank you for helping us ignite the creative economy together. I hope to see you all in the community. Please know that we are accessible and approachable and ready to partner. We want to be excellence driven. We want to be thoughtful and strategic. And we want to, most importantly, tell the story of all the arts and culture organizations or help them tell their story and give them our platform to say, here's an opportunity to market, to to share, to bring awareness, to advocate in a way that we'd like to do intentionally, strategically and collaboratively and inclusively throughout the city of Jacksonville.
Well then. Thank you. I told everyone the lighting bad when I moved the thing. So I'm sorry, but I told everyone I want to be nice and awake after listening to Diana speak. One of the things that I will share with you as we move into questions is that and I, you know, this is a safe space. We talk about this all the time. The cultural council, you know, has has had ups and downs, kind of like a roller coaster over the past decade or so. And I think that it's been, there's been some really strong members of the community that have have come in and throughout the years and, you know, really tried to help shape a better a better organization. And I think Diana, you know, one of the reasons that I have fallen back in love with the cultural council is because of you. So I I genuinely from the bottom of my heart, thank you for taking on, taking on such a very, such an important part of our community and trying as much as possible to kind of bring everyone together so that you can then put back out. I think it's 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 a testament to your personality and to all that you, that all the love that you have for everyone. So thank you very much. And I appreciate you coming on and sharing all this wonderful stuff with us. To that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna like throw you some questions. We have a lot of questions. It's about eight forty nine. So as far as timing goes, we will look. I think that you're gonna be able to answer most of these pretty good time. If we don't get to them, I'll shoot them to you. And then you can give me answers and I can shoot them back out. Does that work? Okay, great. So we're, we're gonna start from the get go. This one's from Jason Roth. Can you talk about the prospect of a signature arts event, something like an art Basel or in Cork or something of those two lines?
Jason, I appreciate you so much for this question. Because on one of the slides that we had, we actually presented to the downtown, the mayor had a council of of signature civic leaders that was there. We were able to talk about what would it be like to bring a public art festival and bring in our CSG partners and bring in our organizations of arts and culture to come together and be able to facilitate that. That's absolutely a goal for us. It's absolutely a conversation that's happening in the city. From the DIA standpoint, the DVI standpoint, we are very excited about what this could look like if the cultural council has the opportunity to be able to facilitate an arts festival. I mean, with all the numbers we just shared, particularly with District Seven and highlighting the areas that we have, the programming that could come from our CSGs. The elevation of the public art that we have downtown. I mean, our goal is to be collaborative. So we want everybody's at the table for us to come together and help make it a very large impactful event. We have strategic best policies that we've been researching and that we know from other peer organizations that have done it well and right. We also have some local resources and talent that we will absolutely tap into. And so the yes, that's on the horizon. With COVID, things have changed and evolved. So we're always being very mindful of that. But I think that that's something that will help put Jacksonville on a much more meaningful map and helping people understand that this is a destination. You don't drive through Jacksonville to get anywhere. You come here to stay, to live and to thrive. And with all of these people moving to Jacksonville, with Lori Boyer talking about the DIA, trying to get more residents downtown. The quality of life is why people come and why people stay. If you don't have anything to do, you're not going to come. If you don't have anything to celebrate or to participate in, you're not going to stay. And other, other cities in the nation want to know that we're representative of the communities that they're trying to recruit here. And public art does that. Our programming does that. It highlights it. So the answer is yes, Jason. We are so excited. Thank you for asking that question and we will keep you up to date. And and as things come together, we'll make sure our stakeholders are involved and that we're moving forward together.
Well, I'm going to go off of that question on to, this is from Robert Devers. Diana, do you feel your placement in the Jesse will increase exposure to arts downtown? Will you be participating in the Left Wri Voice Park? The corner gallery is a great space, but so underappreciated. Any thoughts to help boost the gallery?
Absolutely. Okay. So a couple of different thoughts on this because you've asked three great questions. One is, one of the reasons we moved here was to have more accessibility to the community. We want to be able to make sure that we can host spaces that when people want to have collaborative efforts or forums or things that we can utilize our partnership with the Jesse to be able to provide those spaces and opportunities. The Jesse themselves, as a nonprofit agency, like they are, they are really, really intentional, like Mari and Mark and Katie. Like they are, they are the number one collaborators. If you come to them with a sustainable, well thought, innovative idea. First, they they will listen, they will respond and and they are very community driven. So I think our natural partnership, just being in close proximity will be exciting and it'll be exciting to see how that cross pollinates in the next upcoming years. I think that the corner gallery is vital. Shawana is an amazing and dynamic artist who is a a known activist in the community. And the artists that she's highlighting there are wonderful. So we've been sharing them currently through our social media and our marketing and pushing them out. We will do everything we can to make them successful, to make any arts and culture organization successful. You know, we're here to serve our CSGs. We're here to serve arts and cultural organizations, galleries, artists. You know, there is, there is no one silver bullet. It happens with all of us partnering and working together. And we will continue to help support and elevate on the highest level. And we have some exciting ideas for some individual artists, development opportunities and support with the Jesse hopefully coming down the line. So we've had some great conversations, some great opportunities and definitely something that we want to be thoughtful about.
And maybe that's something to that. I mean, you know, us from downtown council, we host like these little socials or like these walkabouts, all these kind of fun things. And right now we're kind of treading lightly with the resurgence, but maybe that's one of our, maybe that can be one of our field trips as we can come to the corner gallery and and check that out. Because it is really amazing. And anytime anyone's downtown, you've got to come. It's literally impossible to miss. It's up the corner. Of of Ocean of Maine and it's beautiful. It's absolutely. Literally on the corner of of Ocean to Maine and it's beautiful. It's absolutely wonderful. So everyone should come.
And it's open to the public and you can walk in at any time. So if you're just on a lunch break, you can walk through, you can check it out, you can um you know, really appreciate and just kind of have spend a moment there. So if you're in between coffees and you have a moment to spare, come check it out. Uh more often than not, there's staffing or someone in there who can talk to you about the artists and the intentionality behind it. There's a George Floyd memorial piece. Um I know that the I I was uh honored enough to be able to meet the artists um at their launch of the gallery. That was a huge and very well attended event, um really representative. So it's it's been exciting to see. And so I encourage you, if you're walking around downtown, to pop in and check it out.
Um are you gonna be involved? Uh John Bryan, JV wants to know, are you gonna be involved in the Jackson Jazz Festival this year?
Personally, I will absolutely be. I love jazz. Um I am a huge, huge jazz fan. Um the city of Jacksonville puts on that event. So there's absolutely a partnership opportunity there. Um but they're the ones where the, as far as a funding structure, it comes from the city and it's run by the city. Are we available to consult partner and be involved? Yes, we are readily available for any sort of large cultural activity. Um and will you see me there? Absolutely in attendance. I will personally support. And you may even see a more art culture pop up tent. So um having a presence in places, educating people on what we do is one of our primary goals right now as as we're working into this new uh dynamics there.
I think that the Office of Special Events is on this call, so I'm pretty sure they just heard you say that.
We love them and celebrate.
Um um there are so many questions. I'm trying to keep them kind of what somewhat grouped. Uh this is from Gracie. Diana, there are so many murals popping up all over Jacksonville, which is exciting. I know I've seen some in Napport and Springfield areas and more substantial mosaics outside the Jesse. How has the cultural council been involved in these art enhancements?
Actually, it says some of those that you're mentioning there are independent artist efforts and some of them are Art Republic. So Art Republic has done an incredible job of doing murals and they actually did the mosaics for the Jesse. Um there's a lot of, I know that you have public art in the back in your background there too. Um so you know, there's a lot of different pieces. And so if you um are walking around, there's a chance that it could be the cultural council. There's a chance that it could be Art Republic. There's a chance that it could just be an individual independent artist where a company said, hey, I want to do this. And we like it that way. We're not trying to monopolize public art. We just want to make sure that we're helping to provide an avenue for the city funding that is appropriated to it. Um but that being said, uh as we celebrate and move forward, I think you'll see more public art. You'll see more intentional public art place making. Um corporate partners have been, and I applaud a lot of our corporate partners that you saw on that slide. For Florida Blue, for example, we were able to work with a local artist to help elevate another artist who was representative of the community to be able to give them a platform for them to be able to work on a three D sculpture in a capacity that they had not before. So that's a career development opportunity. So everything is an opportunity to be intentional and developmental. And that's what we want to do. We want to marry local, national talent and help elevate it and perpetuate it in the city.
Um as you're talking about that, um what ways does the cultural council support and promote all of the black culture excellence around us?
Yeah, um I adore Black Mural Map. Um you know, if you know Chris Clark and his wife, they are wonderful contributors. Chris Clark is a dynamic artist. He actually teaches classes at TPA. Um he was shown in New York City. I was actually in New York City and got to check out his work in a gallery owned by um a black artist and a black gallery owner, um talking about how they elevate black artists. So we've done a lot of um partnership in how to be more meaningful throughout our community during that art scene shop area. Uh you'll see that we had about, who was the number? It was like forty five percent for BIPOC artists that were elevated. Uh we did a huge um Black History Month artist event where we were able to, almost every artist was able to sell something that was in portrayed in the store. And we were able to have um a start, a separate event that would start with the arts. We were able to have black artists come in and share and celebrate that. We're working with the Black Expo right now to be able to help them understand what resources, the more art culture um community has for them and and how we can elevate and structure them. I think whenever we're able to sing and celebrate, but I also think giving the platform away is important too. There's a lot of people in the community who have their own stories to tell. And like the Ritz Theater, we started doing behind the scenes with them and walking through and they said, Diana, do you want to be able to speak in this? And I said, no, I want to hear from them and I want to hear their story. And so we just hung back and we took a camera and we followed them around. And um the curator and director was able to share with us in real time, a lot of really personal stories about the historic rich black culture as it relates to Ritz Theater and downtown and what used to be the Southern Harlem. Um so education is really important as we partner with organizations like JTA um and being able to help marry that into the Lift Every Park and Sing. That is a very intentional project that we are very well um involved with and partnering with the Jesse in. Um so there's a lot of really great things happening and we continue it. And if you have opportunities, let us know because we are always open to partnering and elevating our um every, every um every partner and every organization, every opportunity we can to help elevate as much as we can as as it really starts in culture.
Okay, so we've got, we're gonna go about four minutes, four, five minute, four, four minutes ish left in questions. So I'm gonna ask some of the 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 nitty gritties, right? So uh this is kind of a two part question because there's two different people that spoke to it. One's from Liz McCoy and one's from Bill Hoff. Liz said for how does nineteen cents per car spent on public art compared to our familiar benchmark cities? And how do we increase that figure so more money is spent? And Bill said, how do we grow the pot of funds available to the cultural council for all the great things that you do? So they kind of play with each other. So.
Yeah, from a price comparison standpoint, Liz, we can absolutely get you those numbers from Amy, um who's um our grant director for this. But from a um strategic alignment of advocacy, I will give you some some numbers. Right now, what we get from the city of Jacksonville is a hundred thousand dollars more than we had twenty years ago. Now, there have been ebbs and flows in that funding since then. The investment has gone up and gone down according to the economy, according to different leadership styles and what they've been invested in and listening. Um I would like to commend the mayor's office and the city of Jacksonville and the city council um for really stepping up in a big way. The COJ Cares Act, having them include arts and cultural organizations was huge to helping to keep doors open and keep people funded and keeping staffing alive. The eight hundred thousand has been huge and then stepping up in June um to be able to help provide emergency funding relief for COVID impacted organizations, particularly our CSGs. That's where that funding is available by ordinance. And then third is um we are working now to secure a hopefully um, I don't want to count my chickens before we hatch, they hatch, but we're three fourths of the way through. So we met with the MBRC, the mayor's office approved approved an increase that was proposed to city council. The city council finance committee proposed the uh approved the increase. So we're waiting for the overall city council to propose the increase that will include um an increase, a tremendous increase to CSG funding and capital grant funding. So um once we know what those confirmed figures are, we will speak and share about them in real time. But a lot of it comes to do, has to do with helping um our leaders understand the ROI to them and their communities. And sometimes it's the conversation of fiscal ROI. People need to know bottom line. So you change, you change their pockets, you change their hearts. On the flip side of that, you change their hearts and they change where they're financing. So I'm a strong believer of where you put your money is where you put your values. And I'm really encouraged by the city of Jacksonville because they've been stepping up in a tremendous way this year. Um and that they have been wonderful partners and that we want to be able to continue to be meaningful partners and help quantify and share with them. You would know whether it's with the Jack Civil Council or other entities who've been really focusing on what are arts and culture numbers? How do they compare to other cities? What is the hardline ROI? Why is this important for you to do now more than ever? You know, Numa from Florida Theater will share about the economic impact of just one night open of Florida Theater. It's way more than just the ticket sales. It's the parking staff. It's the parking sales from the parking, you know, that's a big topic downtown. Um you know, it's the um bar bar sales and the food sales and the staffing and the security and the police officers. You know, it's the the gas sales from people coming downtown to get gas to go there. You know, like there is, there's so much that happens when just one organization is open and thriving. Um so really being able to leverage that and tell that story strategically in a way that people can hear and understand for non-art appreciators to really have them become art appreciators, collaborators, celebrators and um supporters. And then also being able to help take people who already support the arts and be able to quantify that in meaningful ways that hit their values and missions as they marry with ours.
I just want to give you everything I have, which isn't a lot, but I wish I could give it all to you. So here's the, this one's important also. Well, wait, real quickly, we're gonna do, because Eric asks, I know they answered this, but let's answer this really quick quickly. Who makes those footballs and how do they get them?
Eric, um so I I appreciate you already. Um those footballs were amazing. Um and um and it has been wonderful. And I see my friend Adam Madrid just popped up with local filmmakers. We were able to celebrate the LOL um Jack's Festival um a couple of weekends ago, which was amazing. And and we saw a lot of really great filmmakers there. And the answer to that, Adam, is let's have conversations because I know you're partnering with us on the Arts Awards Committee as well. Um and so back to the footballs, those were five different Northeast regional artists. Those were five different local artists. Um and we can share and send to you a link of that highlights all the different artists that we had. Um the Jacksonville Jaguars Foundation was the partner with them. So they provided the footballs. We gave them to the artists. They painted them in real time. Um different players autograph them and then we auctioned them out. So a lot of them are already sold. I can circle back and see if we have any still available, but.
I think there's one that'll be on the silent auction for art awards.
That's right. Yes, unlike Jake Gordon purchased one, so shout out to Jake Gordon um for helping to be our perpetuator and supporter um as a downtown investor. Uh but yes, we we will have one on the arts awards um uh silent auction. So please stay tuned and please purchase. And if you do purchase one or uh please share it, tag it, let us know and we'll share it out so we can get some um credibility for the artist as well. So we want to make sure that they are getting highlighted and mentioned and honored.
Um okay, so this one's really important. And I think that that you can also direct people where to go or how to
Sure.
how to get in touch with you. But have there been changes to artist funding qualifications in the past year? Can you explain what counties are included under your umbrella and what limitations there are if you are not, if if the artist is not located in Duval County?
Sure. Okay, so from the art and public places, Duval County, we serve Duval County for art and public places. Um you'll see that was like in greater Jacksonville, we serve Duval County and some and surrounding areas. We've done partnerships with the beaches. Um so we've had partnerships in different beach areas, which it kind of comes underneath that umbrella of Duval County for us to help support from the CSG perspective, the cultural service grant program. Um when it comes to city funding, we are limited by ordinance. So that funding that comes into us is appropriated out in a very uh choreographed um compliant process with the Office of General Counsel. So our CSGs, um once they get through that funding and they get approved and it's voted on and it's official, we can help serve those organizations that span from Duval County as we know it to the beaches area. Um St. John's County has their own, Ponte Bugee County has their own cultural council. Um but those are the the areas that we can help serve and provide from a CSG side of it, art and public places, it's Duval County. And then um to supplement that is where we have private grants. This is where the private part of the public, private public partnership is so important. When we have private partners come into us and they say, PNC twenty five thousand to give away, we can focus that into any and all organizations, depending on the parameters of the funder and what the needs are of the community. So that gives us a lot of flexibility. So private funding is wonderful because we can make, we can make it go a long way and we can stretch it to areas of need who may not already be served by those other large um pockets.
So did they just go to the website? Is there like a, like on the website, they can just go to the website and contact?
Yeah, well, we have grant funding event available. Um so there's two, I'll answer that in two ways. If you're looking for opportunities, stay close to our Instagram or Facebook and our website for grant opportunities. As we receive funding or interest from corporate sponsors, we'll share it with you in real time to let you know. Same with Call to Artists. Please sign up for our newsletter on our website. That's where you get a lot of the big information. We're actually partnering with Regions to do financial tips there too. Um as we're working with a lot of organizations, how we want to strengthen them and make them viable and sustainable and support them with um additional knowledge because Regions is a huge art supports um sponsor as well. And then um the I, the other side of that, the second part of the answer to that question is if you want to give and you are a private funder and you're saying, I want to, you know, make sure that, you know, I believe in X, Y, Z, and I want to make sure that we can get funding to them. Or if you're coming to me and saying, I want to do X, Y, and Z, what are the needs in the community? We can do that. We speak often to our CSGs and our arts and culture organizations of what are your needs? That's how we got the capital grant need feedback and we're able to help lobby for that with the city this year. So those are the two capacities is either stay informed and stay on our website for opportunities as they come and are presented. And if you'd like to partner with us to provide up for financial opportunities, I'm available, my staff's available. We will sit down and talk to you about how we make that um the most meaningful impact as possible.
Awesome. Well, thank you. So here's where we're at now. We are at nine oh seven. We're a little bit past where we normally are, which is fine. I know there's other, there's questions that are still coming in. We will get answers from Diana on those, you guys, and I will, we will get them out to you, I promise, for anyone who's asking other questions. Um we're gonna move into breakouts and we're going to go with a prompt because it's one of the questions, actually, I think it's a great question. Gracie and I, we tell you this all the time, we're on the backside, like in this massive Google talk. Ben's on it with us. We all like talk in the background, but this was a great question asked by Darren. Why? And um basically we said, this is great. Uh thanks so much. Can you tell us what Jacksonville culture is? And so we're gonna go into breakouts and we want everyone to talk about what they think Jacksonville culture is. Um and then we'll, in the very last thirty, sixty seconds of the event, Gracie will say her goodbyes and those kinds of things, but.